This conference will now be recorded.
Um, any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I had suggested one, but I was persuaded that it's okay as is.
Yeah, I, I think it will be. Only because, Michael, I think, once we get to talking about the land development regulations, that will consume.
Yeah.
That tends to eat, run out the clock, so. Open to items for public not related to the agenda. Anybody have anything that's not related to the agenda that they would like to bring up? Jeff, Nick? Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I remain concerned about what we're hearing and regarding the R P C property, the Hill Farm. But I've been looking at the regional plan. And what you've been talking about, especially concerning the Hill Farm, seems to be in conflict with the regional plan. In terms of, man, I'm gonna look more closely at this, but economic infrastructure, they talk about employment zoning. And that clearly identifies the Hill Farm. Look about, look at future land use. You're looking at the Hill Farm, calling it enterprise zoning. And on the forest integrity map, there's plenty of forest land identified within Chittenden County, but not on the Hill Farm. It doesn't seem to be, it's not a priority. So a lot of what you've been talking about seems to be in conflict with the regional plan. I'm not sure how you, how you square that. But I know this is particularly things on, on the agenda. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'll just sit back and listen. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff, much appreciated. Does anybody else have any, anything that's not related to the agenda?
Can I just ask if Jeff has a specific document he's looking at? Can he share that so that we just understand what his source is?
Sure, it's the.
I think it's the Chittenden County Regional Plan.
He goes plan? Yeah.
And that's available on the RPC's website, I believe. Anything else not related to the agenda? Okay. Announcements and staff report. Paul, anything from you first? Paul Connor?
Just a moment. No, I think that I put my key ones in the packet. Thank you for asking, though.
Okay, good. Anybody, Michael?
Yes, just a question for Paul or anybody. Would you plan to bring Jessie Baker or introduce Jessie Baker to our next meeting so we can all meet her?
I would be happy, happy to extend an invitation to her. I know that these first couple of weeks, she's really just trying to get her feet, her legs under her. But I would be happy if the commission would like to extend an invitation for her to come and as soon as she possibly can.
That'd be great.
So extended.
All right.
Monica, did I see you raise your hand?
Oh, yeah, thanks. First of all, Bernie, are we doing PC with active cameras only to start?
Right. The planning commission should have their cameras on. Everybody, unless they're gonna talk, should have their microphone off.
And, and cameras, right? So the two things I just wanted to point out was, I just think it's interesting that S, Governor Scott signed S forty-seven twenty-two-one, which is a change in, I'm not fully understanding it, but basically it allows for Teslas to have service and sales in Vermont now. I just, I'm sure it will affect other brands as well, but it's the direct to sale into auto industry now that the governor did sign after much back and forth. So just more reason to have more E V power happening. So just, I think that was just signed recently. And also tomorrow, through the Affordable Housing Committee, I was invited to attend a conversation with the American Institute of Architects Vermont Chapter. We're gonna be talking about Brave New Home by Diana Lind, and I look forward to that. So I'll be sharing with you guys what is said, but it looks like a very interesting read. And I'll share the book with everybody.
Great. Duncan?
Just a quick matter of clarification. There was an article in the other paper back on the twenty-seventh about our last debate about the environmental standards. And the young lady who wrote the article quoted me as being concerned about a taping. I think she meant a taping. I'm not sure what a taping is unless Paul can tell me.
The red tape, I think it was about the red tape, that's what it was.
I just want to clarify that taking was what I said, not taping.
Yep.
Bernie, Ted says he's still having trouble with his audio, so I asked him to get his better help, his better half to help. I don't know if that's.
Somebody with some, with better technical expertise, right?
He tried and failed.
Showing is on, so.
Yeah.
His picture's.
Any ideas, Paul, what might be a problem with him? Maybe he should sign in and sign out again?
It says that he's on here via the web, and I guess I'm wondering whether, I don't know, Ted, if you can hear us, but whether you've got the app on your computer, that might work a little bit better than trying to go through the website. But I'll, I'll see if I can send him another version of the link to, that puts the meeting ID for him. Not sure why, it seems about every sixth meeting this happens for Ted.
Yeah, he's showing up in my boxes as being present, and his microphone is showing as green. So it, it looks like he should be on from this end, but.
Yeah.
I'll try, I'll try another thing for him in the meantime, I'll send him an email.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked him whether he's on his computer or something else, he hasn't replied yet.
Okay. Um. Anything else from the planning commission? No. Let's get started with the Spear Street intersection study then. Paul, you wanna intro, Paul Connor, do you wanna introduce that? And then I think probably gonna have.
Sure, I'm gonna introduce the, the team, and then I'll let them do the rest of the work. So a couple of months ago, you got an initial presentation on this project. This is looking at the intersection of Swift and Spear. This is a collaboration between the City of South Burlington and the Regional Planning Commission. We asked them as part of last year's Unified Planning Work Program to, to study an intersection in the city. And this was the, the top one to be looking at, so they're doing this on our behalf. There is a consultant is involved as well, but the project team is represented here by our local folks. So Delilah Hall is our staff person from South Burlington. She's our zoning administrator and also has a significant background in transportation planning. Jason Charast and Si, Sarah Pelley are here from the Regional Planning Commission, and they're here to give a little overview for you of where we're at and what the next steps are. So I'll let you all take it away from here.
Well, also Duncan was involved.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And Duncan, you are the planning commission liaison, I'm sorry, I was looking at the new faces that popped up. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so Paul took care of the introductions from, that I was going to go through, so thank you for that, Paul. And again, I'm here with the, with the rest of the project team and Duncan, who is a member of the project team as well for the planning commission. As you know, as Paul said, we were last here in March when the study started its initial analysis of how the intersection functions. And we had just launched a community input survey at the time to get feedback from the public on how they experienced the intersection. And so we wanted to come back, talk to you tonight about the results from that survey and the analysis of the intersection specifically where it's, it's leading in alternatives, potential alternative geometries for the intersection. And Jason and Si are gonna walk you through these. And I will make a special note that, that the feasible alternative designs are, are, we're still at the high level concept stage for them. And I will note, and we'll, we can get into this more later, that each of them, except for the no build, entails some land acquisition as part of their geometry. And again, we're, this is just very initial, high level thinking about changes, nothing set in stone. And I was able to discuss the concepts broadly with the adjoining property owners, U V M and the All Saints Episcopal Church. And I see that we have representatives from each of those institutions here tonight on the call, which is great. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Si and Jason to go into some details. We know you have the information in your packet, you have a busy agenda tonight. So we'll give you a very broad overview and then answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Delilah. Hi, everyone. So, yeah, I don't wanna, I will not take a lot of time, I'll keep it broad. So we received about two-hundred-and-twenty responses in the first survey. That's a great participation from the community. And in general, there's a great support for this project with the redesign of the intersection. The most common concern that raised is safety for non-motorized users and side distance issues at this intersection. So those are two major things that we noticed in the public input survey. And there are other minor things, like, you know, right turn, left turn complex, and the location of crosswalks are being like, you know, challenged for all road users. So, so that's a broad takeaway from the survey results. And there should be a survey result summary in your packet, it shows all the information. If you have any questions, please reach out to us. So by taking all this input and we look at the intersection, I mean, the consultant look at the intersection geometry and, and basically, the, we identified two basic feasible options. One is a signalized intersection, another one is a roundabout. There can be other, like, you know, minor things that can be done within those two major categories. For example, intersection, signal intersection, the whole intersection can be shifted a little bit to the south side, which is called, which is termed as, you know, shifted intersection in the alternatives. Or the other option we looked at is a T intersection, which is pretty much like a square ninety-degree intersection. And then again, in that T intersection, the other option we added is a split lane, a split, a slip lane for northbound right turn movements. So, so these are different options that can be included in a signalized intersection. And roundabout, you know, we can, we look at it by changing a little bit of the east-west street alignment. And it is a feasible option, so we tried to look at it. And we also did, I mean, the consultant did the traffic analysis and provided those information in the, in the alternatives presentation. So I'm not gonna go through the whole slides because there is a, a voice presentation of all the alternatives on the project webpage, so, which can be available on our, on our website. And then please go through this video, a voice presentation, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us. And following this presentation, there is a survey, a second survey to gauge public opinion on preferred feasible options. So, so this gives public to rank the preference, which one is the high preference, which is the least preference options. So this will, this will give us some idea about, like, you know, what is the, like, you know, preferred feasible option. This survey will be on until July second, so we are giving almost like three, three, three to four weeks time for the public to participate in the survey. That's Delilah.
I, I was, I just put a link to the, to the survey, to the alternatives feasibility information and a link that also include the link to the story map survey. So while you, the commissioners received a static packet, there's actually a video with a consultant who's sort of speaking about the information, and it's a little richer than what you saw on the, the flat page. So encourage you to watch the video and then look at the survey as well.
Thank you, Delilah. Yeah, yeah, so please look at the video, which goes through each slide and gives information what's presented in each slide and participate in the survey. And this survey will be on until July second, so hopefully we'll get back with the consultant in the second week of July and then come up and come up with a, you know, hopefully a preferred feasible option. And then we'll get back to this committee in the last week of July, bring all the information from the second survey.
So this is Bernie. It, it might be useful to just quickly go through the slides just for the public that's present and just, you know, very briefly talk about the different alternatives and then tell the public where they can find the slide presentation. And I know we already sent the link for the survey, but I wanna make sure that, that they kinda know what the options are that we're talking about and where exactly to go to, to read it in more detail in addition to doing the survey. So you don't have to spend a lot of time, but it'd be good, I think visually, for people to see different things that, that we're looking at.
Definitely, yeah. Yeah, thanks for, for bringing, bringing up the presentation. So you wanna go through the slides and I can, you wanna, I guess.
And then we'll save questions kinda to the end. I know you got your hand up, Michael can.
Yeah. I'll go through it, if Si or Jason want to talk about it.
I was just wanting to report that Ted can't join, his internet is down.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, so go ahead.
Right, so this is the existing layout. So the, the orange patch area, whatever you're looking at on this screen, is the existing pavement. And the green, light green shaded area is the existing path. So this is a existing layout of the intersection. So it shows like, what is the stream buffer and existing pavement, utility poles, existing paths. So this is, this is just existing layout. And this is the existing alignment, which is kinda like, you know, you can see big curve. Delilah, would you please go back a little bit? This, yeah, so this is existing alignment, it is, as you can see, in east-west road, so street, it has a big curve through the intersection. So this is, this is what it looks like in existing. If you go to the next one. So this is one alternative, I was talking about T alignment, where we are making S Street like a ninety-degree with Spear Street, this alignment. And this is a roundabout alignment where the S Street has a little bit of a shifted towards south so that we can fit in a roundabout there at the intersection. So this is what the roundabout placement might look like. So this is all like rough rendering, so there's no surveys done on this part. This is more like a graphical presentation. It's only a concept. So this slide provides information like, you know, what are the pros and cons, or how, what safety measures were achieved, and what, what are the benefits for pedestrians and how the driving conditions improve with roundabout. I'm not gonna read through all the text. This shows the cost of route, right of way and construction cost and traffic operations. So this is the T intersection with a ninety-degree T, so it's like, more like a square T intersection with a new alignment, with a path reconstruction and planned bike lanes connected to paths. As you can see, new, new path on Spear Street on North Side, new crosswalks. This side shows, shows pedestrian signal phasing. So there are two types of signal phasing we can look at. One is a leading pedestrian interval, which means it gives a heads-up, heads-up time for pedestrians about like seven seconds so that pedestrians can get into the crosswalk and then the opposite sides get the, the green light for traffic to go. Or we can go with an exclusive pad phase, which is like, you know, where everybody gets, everybody, all traffic and all approaches stops and pedestrians can clear the intersection. So this one has a different lane configuration, so we can look at exclusive lanes, exclusive right turn lanes, exclusive left turn lanes, shared lane configuration. So these are all comes into a more detailed analysis. So this is a slip lane and this is a plain option, and you can see northbound right turn lane, it makes a slip, makes a big curve and it connects to Swift Street, past the crosswalk on East Side. So this is the one option we looked at. Again, same thing, you know, we look at all the signal timing plans. And then there is a comparison matrix here, which shows how much right of way is required and what are the traffic level of service for motorized vehicles and what are the safety concerns achieved with the different alternatives is, is tabulated in this comparison sheet.
Is there one that rose to the top in terms of traffic performance and safety?
I believe so. I believe there was. It's a question of scoring that Bernie's asking, was there one, were there one or two that, that scored the, the highest in all categories?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, in, in general, roundabouts scored high with pedestrian safety and crash reductions, especially with the severity of crashes reduction with the roundabout.
Monica?
Grabbed an old version, I'm just realizing, so if Jason or Si has a more current version up, I would suggest they grab that, apologies.
I have that up, if you want me to share that. Si, does that work?
Yeah. Yeah, Paul, can all attendees, can all, can other people share? Jason, are you able?
To the one we have in the packet?
No, the one in the packet is, is current. I think the one that I brought up on the screen might, might, I might have grabbed an, an older version.
I just was gonna ask for just some perspective as we're asking the community to weigh in on this. I know that there's a lot of details in such a roundabout to be figured out, but is there a, a size that you can, is there an example around that you can equate what you would envision the size of this being? Like, the one I'm thinking of is in Williston by the shopping, you know, like, from, to get from, to get from Old Navy to the Christmas tree shop, but that's very small. I imagine this is much more, much bigger, but is there a, a reference that we can provide people so that they can understand how the, that this kind of traffic can work with a roundabout?
That's a good question. So you wanna show like a, like a location of a roundabout somewhere in the state?
Just, and if not, if not close by, then just even if there's a Google map of something in another city that we can just, people can see to understand.
Yeah.
Good question, and if we don't know, if we don't know off the top of our heads, it's one we'll take back and definitely, definitely, you know, supply later after the meeting or part of the goal is to come back again after, go through the input and, and wanna, after we have the second survey results. So we can discuss it then too.
Okay, Monica? I'm telling you, it has one at the intersection of, I think, Route two and three oh two. And then there's one as you head out towards Jeffersonville, the intersection of Route fifteen and something.
I was gonna say, one of one hundred, Waterbury?
Oh.
I think all the ones that I've seen are quite old.
One of them are fairly new.
Yeah, and so that one in Waterbury, is that the kinda size that we're, is that a comparable size?
I would guess, but that might be a better question for Si or Jason.
Yeah, I think that this one, what we are showing on here is about like hundred-and-thirty feet, I believe. But I will, I will double check with the consultant. So we can, I'll double check again with the consultant on the diameter. And if Waterbury is pretty much, like, you know, comparable size, then, yeah, we can definitely bring it in.
Thank you.
I do think it's important, I, I think that's a great question, and I, I would recommend, Si, if you can have the team look at finding a couple of examples of ones that are really the same scale and the same volume. Because, you know, I would say that the one in Jeffersonville on fifteen is a very large roundabout. That is, you know, and it's on a state highway, it's a very different context than Swift and Spear. And we, I would be, I would hesitate to give people the impression that the speed and volume and context of one of those is something, is something to look at, so.
Good point.
So, so that's what I would recommend.
And the one thing I would say for the, to, to sort of focus on is that, that table, the matrix that Si was showing, showing the, the sort of improvements in, in, for, for different users and for the streets. Typically, when there's, there's these sort of geometric changes in roadways, one, one user sort of suffers at the expense of another user. And in the, if you look at this, how, how these meet the goals, which is up here on, thanks, Jason. The roundabout ticks more boxes than the others, just to sort of have it there. And then you can look at the, the data of, of how much improved it is. Normally, if pedestrians get improved and vehicles go down and, and whatnot. But in this instance, this is one where everybody gets a benefit, so just putting that out there.
I'll just raise my hand that I, I'm glad to see that, but I cannot envision a rotary being safer for bikes. So when it's time, I'll really appreciate seeing examples of that. It's, they, they're always so chaotic and people are just looking to, to get off and, and how do you even see a pedestrian, a bike? So not for now, but for when you do come back, I, I'll really appreciate some perspective on that.
Some.
Like, it was safe.
Michael, do you have a question?
I was just commenting on Monica's concern, but if you look, if I look at the diagram and the layout, it looks like this is safer for bicycles because of the dedicated pedestrian bike crossings that are associated with this roundabout.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Jason Charast, I see you got your hand up.
Hi, Bernie, good to see you. I, I just wanted to make a couple of points, and, you know, one is to, you know, this is a feasibility study, so I wouldn't get too hung up on the details at this point. You know, the actual size of the roundabout, if that is an alternative that you wanna move forward, that can be kind of as you, as you get into the design. But with regard to the size, I just, would just point out that, you know, this was designed using a W B forty, so it's, that is, that is not, I can assure you, the design vehicle that was used in the roundabout that Paul mentioned, where, where was that, Paul, sorry, I forget, it was on Route fifteen.
Right, so that, that's my point, is that I, I wanna make sure that we're thinking of something that's more appropriately scaled, you know, whether we're talking about something like Waterbury or the one in Middlebury, though that's in a more downtown context, but something that's, you know, a slower speed, smaller, tighter radius.
But I do think we can, you know, get some examples, relevant examples together.
Does the public have any initial questions?
Oh, we still have the results of the Community Input Survey as well.
Yeah, Jason, would you please bring up the community survey, please? Just to show what it looks like.
Um, and maybe while he's bringing up the survey, Paul, this will be on, on the South Burlington website for the public if they wanna click on it and go through it in more detail.
Yes, it's not there right now, but it'll be there tomorrow.
Perfect.
As well as in the news, the, the newsletter, it's going out in this week.
Newsletter is gonna be going out.
Excellent. So, yeah, maybe just quickly go through the survey and then maybe we can wrap it up.
I, I had a question for Si or Jason, looking at various options. It looked like the, the straightening of Swift Street, you know, from west to east, took up a lot of church, of the church property, whereas the roundabout only has a bike, a bike pit path in that property, which, so it would use less of it, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, I think there are two options. Yeah, yeah, I think there are two options. Roundabout has a little bit shifted alignment. So the the east west street has a shifting, but it shifts to the south. So that would change the whole scenario. So, yeah, the roundabout would be a little bit to the south of the existing intersection. Jason, the other one. Sorry.
Is this not what you're looking for, Si?
No, no, I'm looking for the the second survey.
The survey that people will answer to, I'm guessing.
Preferred option.
That's not in this. I'm sorry.
I did put it in the story map in the in the chat. Si, if you want to look at the chat thread.
Oh, yeah.
Jason, are you bringing up the the story map or do you want me to do that?
If you have it up, I would appreciate that.
Jason is someone that comment committee or works for the city?
I will. I will share with the that it presented like when I was sharing screen, there was like a delay. So to Jason's interest, sort of the response time in between when you bring up the document and share the document and then get it. It I was experiencing a delay. So I don't know if you were experiencing that, Jason.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
While you're bringing up the survey, we did have a question from Lanny at UVM. She wanted to know if UVM will lose access to the driveway on Spear Street with the roundabout option? Or would this be replaced? And maybe it's too early in the design to know that. But any initial thoughts on that?
I don't think we've gotten to that level of design, but it's noted that that would be a concern for UVM.
Let's see, somebody's got their hand up. Not sure who it is because I'm small screen, the guy with the purple shirt.
Hello, I'm Nick Anderson.
Yeah.
Member of the community, but I just wanted to mention that I noticed that all four of the options don't provide any northbound travel from the intersection on Spear Street. And and that's actually the the route that me and my kids take the most is actually going straight through that intersection, going north so that we can cut across Songbird, saves ourselves a hill on Swift. And so I'd love to see in future designs, whatever option is chosen, that there's some northbound potential, whether or not there's a bicycle slip lane that goes from the wreck path kind of directly on to on to Spear Street there. It's actually a pretty wide shoulder, so it's nice. But some more northbound travel from the intersection would be great to see. You know, recognizing that it's also a pretty road bike corridor, like lots of speedy roadies going through there. We probably still want to make sure we're accommodating the north south travel through the intersection instead of trying to push a hundred percent of people onto paths. Because I know that a bunch of that, you know, UVM cycling crew and whoever else is not going to do that. So trying to look, make sure we're accommodating some through bike travel would be really nice.
Can I just say Nick is a very important member of the Bike Ped Committee? And I know last time, I think there wasn't a lot of time, there was just a timing glitch and you guys didn't have. So I think it's really important that the Bike Ped Committee get a lot of opportunity to give input on this round and going forward. So thank you, Nick.
We would love that too, Monica.
Thank you. But I just get clarification on Nick's comment. Nick, not just northbound on Spear, did I follow along correctly?
Yeah, so going north on Spear, all of those, if you look at the north side of the intersection at the roundabout and every other option, that all kind of gets you across Spear to the to the wreck path on the other side, which doesn't exist yet. But trying to have some sort of easier entry onto Spear Street there for people that are coming maybe off of Swift going northbound or people who are going through the intersection going northbound to be able to get back on the spear easily without kind of being T-boned with the with the road. That makes sense.
That's just, yeah, it's good input. And in this, the the second survey that's up, it allows participants to provide like feedback about these alternatives once.
I totally did that already, David.
No, we got it there, but but we would encourage others who are listening to 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 think about it as you are, Nick, and and give rich feedback like that.
Okay, Duncan had a comment.
Yeah, no, actually, Nick, Nick raises a very good point. There is a lot of bike traffic, road bike traffic through that intersection. And he makes another very good point. Those are not people who are going to go over to the bike path. They're going to want to go through the intersection and a roundabout is going to be, I'm not sure how you fit that in there. But there's, you know, a lot of those roadies, as he calls them, are not going to go on bike path. And and there is a lot of bike traffic, especially north south on there.
Michael.
Something to think about.
Yeah, my question was not for roadies, but for regular bike riders, a question for Si or or one of the team. If this, obviously, this is not signalized, so the pedestrian crossings, would they have the flashing light on the armed so that if you arrive there, you press the button and then you can cross safely? As as we have in other parts of of the city. And then it would also mean that traffic doesn't have to slow down if there's nobody waiting to cross. So is that something that you have in mind? The pedestrian crosses, there are four of them, I guess, around this roundabout.
Yeah, I mean, those are all like minor details, like, you know, those are all more details. They can be looked at in the other, like, you know, scoping study. If if a roundabout is is chosen as a feasible option, then, you know, we can definitely look at that. Adding RFBs are like, you know, pedestrian phasing signal. So those are all different options which can be included in that analysis.
Great. So just to stay on schedule, any final wrap up? Glenn sprawl, looks like you're raising your hand. Yep.
Yeah, I I didn't don't see how to do it electronically, but I have my hand up. Thank you. I'm here as a representative, a local walker, we live in Stonehedge, and a representative of All Saints Church where I'm the senior warden. And I think it was Michael Mitag who commented, it looks like the straightening of the Swift Street curve going through that intersection tends to use rather a large chunk of church property to do it, including wiping out a community garden. It's offered as a service to not just church members. I also, I would, I do all three things. I go through that intersection in my car and as a walker and as a bicyclist from time to time. For us, walking is second to in frequency to driving in large part because being the closest members of our church to the church, we often walk to the church. And in this whole, during the whole pandemic, we've been the ones to pick up the mail and sort it. And we often do that by walking. And that has convinced us that the, one of the odd drawbacks for the present arrangement is that it's kind of hard to get to the church by walking, frankly. You have to do that, first of all, you take your life in your hands going getting through the across Spear Street because of the the poor visibility coming from the west on Swift for drivers. And they're they're often accelerating around that curve. And then you have to go rather far west, far east on to cross Swift and come in sort of through the back door, as it were, to the church. So I, my initial impression is that the roundabout option, which I understand is not fully detailed yet, that seems to offer not only safer transit for walkers, but more direct access to the church by walking, which is of course set up to be driven to. But hopefully, we're going to encourage more bicycling bicycling and walking as we make these improvements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else before we wrap this up? Bob Britt.
Thank you. Just want to add a couple of things. I'm glad that you're looking at the roundabout because it does seem too small to to handle the vehicles without them just flowing through. And and it just doesn't seem to give enough space. So I'm glad you're going to look at examples like Waterbury, which I believe is much bigger than the one that you're showing. Couple of things to keep in mind to to solve Glenn's issue, the shifted intersection could help that a lot. At least it gives a crosswalk at all four corners. Although for one point seven million dollars, seems like it could be done a lot for a lot less dollars with just crosswalks at each corner. But I know it's connecting the wreck path down to down to Spear Street on the side where the church is. Another thing that the consultant should keep in mind is is that there may be a need for a wreck path on Spear Street, and this is on the east side of Spear Street from Swift Street heading down the intersection to the on the east side to the entrance of the planned Spears Meadow. Because right development, because right now there is not a way to get over to Swift Street from Spear. That that development, at least the way it was sketched out or planned to get to the wreck path to finish the off-road parallel bike way that the Bike and Ped Committee, and I'm talking as a not as a Bike Pet member, committee member that I am, but as an individual. But we have a a plan for the wreck, for a parallel bike way that takes you from South Village through the long property that is being developed through South Point, across Underwood, up Vale, so Underwood to Nolan Farm, up Vale through the Spear Meadow, and then it needs to somehow connect to the network, this wreck path network at the corner somewhere at Swift Street, and that hasn't been fleshed out. So that should be kept in mind by the by the consultants.
Thank you. So why don't we wrap this up and then just maybe Paul, Connor and Delilah, just one more time where people can find the slides and the link to the survey and then we'll wrap this up.
Sure. So the link to the survey, I did post that in the chat of the meeting. But we will be putting it on the city's website. If you look at the planning zone and zoning department page, we'll have a link to it, which will connect to CCRPC site. And we're also going to put an announcement with a link in the city news newsletter that will be coming out. So there'll be two ways to access the information.
Great.
And and the survey will be open through July second. And if committee members have questions or feedback, feel free to give us that through that same time as well.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
I see, I see Ted is on Ted, can you hear us now? He's got his thumbs up. So Ted is with us. All right. So let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is official map changes. We had talked about this a little while ago. And Paul put it on the agenda so that hopefully we can, you know, move this along. So Paul Connor, do you want to provide a brief intro to this?
Happy to do that. So back in April, the commissioners asked staff to prepare an update to the official map for you that would replace the planned roadway connecting Swift Street Extension to Heinsberg Road with a recreation path in its place. And also, we talked briefly about making one other update to the official map, which was catching up to the 2016 comprehensive plan. Sorry, it's taking a second for this to load here. Removing a planned roadway that was on the old official map between Deerfield and IDX Drive through the UVM Hort Farm. So what you see in front of you is an updated official map that shows those two things. Staff is recommending along with that that you retain, as we said, the wreck path and in fact, connected at two different locations on Heinsberg Road. One through the edge of the Rye neighborhood, which is where the planned roadway is currently shown. And one in in the official map and one directly through the Hill Farm, which is where the comprehensive plan had shown a roadway. So this keeps the most options open. And related to that, staff is recommending that the official map contain a an intent for a sixty foot planned right of way. I know that's wider than a recreation path needs to be typically. We only do twenty or thirty feet for a recreation path. But it keeps, it gives the city the most options going forward, whether to need to meander the path or, you know, make other use of it if ever needed, use it for emergency, et cetera. So that's what's in here. I wanted to just say a quick thank you to Melanie Needle. This, there's a lot of, a lot of very minor updates to the official map that happened automatically via state statute. And it was somewhat, I think she she lost somewhat of her eyesight going through and making sure that everything was representing exactly the way it was supposed to be from an old PDF map that we had. So that's what we've got.
Thanks, Paul. Before we get into kind of discussion, Michael, you had sent a screenshot aerial. Did you have something that you wanted to point out with that?
Well, yes, I have a couple of things that I'd like to get an explanation for. The the public input and the planning commissioners asked for a wreck path. We didn't ask.
Michael, you just went on mute. I'm sorry. We missed the second half, what you just were saying.
We didn't ask, where did I get, we asked for a single wreck path to replace Swift Street Extension. We didn't ask for a for two, and we didn't ask for a sixty foot right of way, which some of my friends and neighbors have said, looks like a back door to getting the road through at some point in the future. So I don't, I'm not quite sure why we're doing it. But sixty foot right away for a wreck path is seems excessive. Twenty foot is from twenty or thirty feet is probably fine. Bernie is referring to a screenshot I made, which makes use of, instead of bisecting a private piece of land belonging to, well, Nick was on, but the Hill Farm. We could do this wreck path on on city owned property from start to finish. And if maybe Paul can bring up that sketch to show what I meant, you'll understand what I'm talking about.
Coming in just a moment, Michael.
While he's getting it, the other, the other things that were objectionable were, you know, crossing a five hundred year flood plain and a class two wetland, a wreck path obviously has to be bridged, but that's a lot less work and cost and and disturbance than a sixty foot right of way, which has to do the same thing. So I really, I also object to it. I don't see its necessity.
There you go. Sorry about that.
Okay. So, yeah, it this shows from the. So, yeah, it this shows from the there are two two proposed direct paths that I show here from the end of from the intersection of Swift and Brand Farm Drive, I guess it is. They they initially go through from the trailhead in Wheeler parallel to the boundary between Wheeler and the Hill Farm. And then along the one goes east following the boundary of the of the city owned 24 or 28 acres there and then staying on it and connecting with this, I think it's Langdon Road. And the other one continues south all the way to the intersection of of Wheeler and that same city owned parcel and runs along the the boundary line and connects to Fox. I can't see the name. Oak Creek area. And it doesn't, we don't take any land away from from the Hill Farm, cut it. I mean, bisecting it doesn't sound like a great idea. And either one of these would remain on city owned property all the way. And and if we stick with stick to the boundary lines, the least disturbance of the the core part of the forests on these on both of these parcels.
Monica.
Is the, thanks for providing this, Michael. The the first part where the where you're leaving Swift and then you're going to take that right turn. That's very wet territory. And in fact, they have to block that area off to pedestrians and walkers in the in the spring through the winter. I mean, that it seems like that's a very, very delicate area. And that's a very long stretch.
Are you talking about the orange line?
Both the orange and the blue when you're first taking your right off of off of Swift. That's going like right through, I think. And it's a big stretch of it. Whereas, you know, going straight is already I know it's on the the Hill Farm, and I don't know what their opinion is of this. I'd almost like to hear what their thoughts are of their concerns might be of having the bike path there. But there is already a well established path, which you can see even here. Oh, he's here. I I would like to know because to me, cutting creating anything new through any of this area is should be a concern. And there is already this established, but can I can, well.
Maybe you want me to go in here? Nick first, and then maybe Michael after that.
We've always been supportive of a bike path connection. So we're certainly amenable to that. You know, I will say, taking it, taking Swift Street off the official map doesn't make sense to us because we're talking 20 years out here. So it's always harder to put something back on a map than to take it off. I mean, the city is going to have full control of whether or not this road ever goes in without taking it off the map. It just makes it that much harder for future generations to decide what their transportation network network should look like. But Swift Street aside, we're certainly supportive of a bike path link through our property. Hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. Michael, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on Monica's concern. Yeah, there is at the eastern boundary of of the Wheeler Park, it is very wet. But if you move west a little bit, there is an existing path already. And so it would be a bit further west from that boundary. Where the I the orange and the blue lines are just colored to differentiate them. I didn't locate them. They should be located in the same the same pathway. Either way.
Michael, are those an option A and an option B where you wouldn't do both? They're just two different ways of looking at it?
Yes, A or B.
Okay, thanks. Duncan?
Yeah, I kind of echo what Monica said. It seems like if we're looking not to impact habitat, just going straight across would be the the least impact. It's the shortest distance and seems to impact the the least amount of forest and otherwise, because both those both those paths look like they impact a lot of grasslands and forest land, much more so than just going straight across. And if there's already a path there.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, that is right. But the proposed 60 does much, much more damage than than what I'm proposing. I was just proposing that either one, the the orange one obviously shorter. But as an alternative to going to going straight through the hill property. But I'm I'm happy. But the other one, the 60 foot right of way that goes through prime forested areas would do a tremendous amount of environmental damage.
Well, I maybe would disagree with you on that, Michael. I mean, the right away is just where the property lines are. I mean, the path would still be built as a 10 foot wide path and everything else would remain native. All the right away does is define boundaries, not what the actual clearing and grubbing would be.
That's all very well, but if it gets it gets on the map, it means it can be built in the future. It just shouldn't be on the map. It shouldn't.
I'm sorry. We have a couple of different things we're talking about here, though. We're talking about where something goes and then how wide it is. Can we stick with one for a minute? We were talking about where something is going to go. And and to me, the 60 foot is a very different conversation. So which one?
Monica, so let's let's finish that part up then. So in terms of where it goes, Paul has presented us with a change to the official map that shows a bike path connecting straight through at this point. And then the the IDX drive things, and we'll do the 60 foot right away separately. So Michael has presented an alternative to what the official map shows. So maybe at this point, it might be worthwhile to just take a straw poll and and just ask the commissioners. You know, who feels comfortable with the official map as shown versus what Michael's got. So
Bernie, you can't you can't do one without the other because the proposal is for two two paths, one of which is a 60 foot right of way and and a possible path and a possible road in the future. So we have to this, we have to choose one of them. And if I were to choose one of them, I would choose the one that goes straight across the Hill Farm. And that's the question.
Right. That is the question. So, so.
Can I ask one one question before that, though? Michael, I've heard other people as well say that there is some other path. Were you marking on something that is in fact a cleared, already existing path? Or no, that's those lines go along?
No. I only put I only I only put those on as an alternative to the 60 foot right of way, which, you know, gets right across very, very valuable and environmental resource, even it belongs to the city mostly.
So straw poll on location?
Ted's got his hand up. Sorry.
Bernie, thanks. Maybe, you know, I have a feeling that the the right of way is is probably the bigger issue at this point. So maybe possibly just doing the straw poll. Who's in favor of a 60 foot right of way? If we get that off then that would probably determine a little bit better where the bike path might go. But that's just a suggestion.
Before we do that for the 60 foot right away, it it might make sense for for Paul and certainly I can chime in as well for what the logic is of having a 60 foot right away. Paul Connor, do you want to give us?
Yeah. So so first and foremost, this is a decision of the commission and the council. So, you know, staff's giving our recommendation, but these are your choices to make. And, you know, I I'm very comfortable with that. The reason to consider a 60 foot right of way, there's really two. One is it is possible that you would acquire the right of way well before doing something like a rec path. And a wider right of way gives you more opportunities to meander and either make something interesting or avoid natural resources. The second one is that it does preserve more options for a future generation. A future generation could be 50 years from now, could be 100 years from now. What I can say is that the rights of way that we have on Spear Street and Heinsberg Road and places like that are the ones that were established in the mid 19th century. So we, given that there was already a planned roadway previously through there, it seemed that the most conservative action the city could take is to retain the same right for 60 feet. In terms of why we showed two connections. As I said, one of the comprehensive plan maps showed it directly connecting across the other one showed it connecting into Landen Road. We'd be perfectly fine if the connection between Hill Farm and the Rye neighborhood happened completely outside of the natural resources area. But given that Langdon Road was built with a rec path on it, we wanted to make sure that that segment was just doesn't just disappear into nowhere and that we're connecting neighborhoods in the future. So that could be drawn differently to be entirely outside of anything that's been identified as natural resources if that would be of more, if if that's the issue of having two connections over there. So that's our thinking on that stuff. But again, this is commission and councils choice.
I'm just going to add just a couple of things on on the right away. So it also doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be a road. If the city owns right away, for example, if there was a water capacity issue in the future and they needed to install a water line from Swift Street across, they would be able to install the water line, which is buried in the right away. And the other thing is, is just to emphasize again that that, you know, the path is is the path. So it's 10 feet and the other 50 feet would remain undisturbed. As Paul said, it only provides options for meandering path. So anyway, at go ahead. Let's see, Monica first, then Michael, and then and then Paul Ingles. So Monica, Michael, Paul Ingles.
Bernie, your question, your comment about the water line, like what kind of right away, would you normally be looking at specifically for that?
Well, normally they don't take up much room. But again, what the 60 foot does is allow the city in the future that if they needed to put a water line in, you know, to route it to minimize impact.
I mean, but we're protecting the forest and the forest roots, which is really the livelihood of the forest is in the root system is what needs protection.
Something other than a road, whether they would ever do it or not is, you know. Just trying to provide other examples of what a right away could be used for. Michael?
Well, first of all, I believe Champlain Water District already has a water line right of way running from the end of Swift. It's it's actually in the Wheeler Park and runs all the way through, I believe, as far as Heinsberg Road. And secondly, you know, saying this is something for future generations is just, I'm sorry, it's it's a Trojan horse horse to build something that we that the current generation doesn't want. And if you're talking about protecting the rights of the future generation, we should worry about the environmental impact of having that right away and that possibility, not probability, of of having a road there in the future. It's a much safer option and much more in line with what we've been asked to do by the public to just have a single pedestrian bike pedestrian path connecting Swift Street to Heinsberg Road. I also note that the 60 foot right of way also takes another chunk of the hill property. So, you know, more loss of land for the owners there. It's just not not necessary and not what we were asked to do. As I said, it's a it's a way to undo what we're trying to do now.
Okay, Paul Ingles.
Just a couple of questions. What's a typical right away for a road? And what's a typical right away for a bike path?
Bernie, do you want to answer that? Or do you want me to jump in here?
Either way, so 60 feet would be typical for a road for a bike path more on the order of 30. Is that consistent with your thought, Paul?
Yeah, I'd say that in, yeah, so 50 to 66 feet is typical because historically Vermont goes by rods, which somebody will have to explain to me what those are, but they're 15 and a half feet, I believe, or 17 and a half feet. So 50 and 66 are pretty common. And then for a rec path, we have somewhere between, some of them are 20, some of them are 30. That's that's typically and and, yeah.
So does it say that more loudly and clearly than that?
Okay. So Ted had suggested that we vote on whether to go with the 60 foot right away or whether to go with a more standard bike path right of way of, you know, the 20 foot range. So let me do a let me do.
Is that going to be a motion? Or a straw poll?
I was just going to do it as a straw poll to to begin with.
Follow it up.
So Paul Ingles, 20 feet or 60 feet ish?
20.
Monica? 20. Michael?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm asking whether we whether we stick with the recommended 60 foot right away or we go with a more standard bicycle right of way of like 20 feet.
I don't want to ride away where it's shown on a map at all. I've already said it should be the one that goes straight.
We Ted had suggested that we talk about the width of the right away and get that resolved. So that's what we're trying to get resolved at this point.
If I want to be facetious, it should be zero feet. But if if I have to make a choice, and this is not a choice that I want to make at all, then it's 20 feet.
Duncan?
I guess I would go with 20 feet as well.
Ted?
20 feet.
Okay, so Paul. Sounds like we're going to stick with the the typical bike path right of way. So that answers that question. Now, the second question is, and let's start, maybe we'll just start with the easy one. Does anybody have a problem with what's being proposed for the official map for IDX Drive?
No.
So again, quick poll, everybody's okay with the IDX Drive as proposed? Thumbs up from Duncan, Ted, Monica, Michael and Paul Ingles. So the IDX part of what's being proposed on the official map, everybody's cool with. So the bike path that Paul has shown on the official map, the alignment of that. Again, I'm just going to do in a a quick straw poll. Who's okay? And the question is, who's okay with the alignment as Paul shows it currently on the official map? Duncan?
So quick question, Bernie, sorry. Are we talking about both paths?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to start, we're going to start with what the recommendation on the official map is. And and if if the majority are are comfortable with that, then that's going to be as far as we go. If the majority.
Bernie, you can't you you can't force us to make that. Bernie, you can't, you you can't force us to make that, that, but we got to choose between one path or two paths. You can't force us to accept two paths just by saying it's twenty feet.
I, Michael, I I think I can start with the the staff has recommended an official map change that's now shown in front of us. And I can ask the commission if they support this as shown, and that's what I'm asking. And if if the majority of the commission supports it as shown, then that's what we're gonna do. If the majority of the commission doesn't support it as shown, then we can talk about what we want to do differently.
I have a clarifying question.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm seeing the two, I'm seeing the one that cuts over and then swoops down and then connects by the neighborhood. And then I'm seeing one that's going directly across. Um, again, and the one that's swooping down is going right outside on the Hill Farm side. As I'm remembering the property, it's kind of swooping around the habitat block that's down there. Or it could, we could ask that it would. The one that goes straight across to me is um, would potentially um, make requirements of whatever the Hill Farm opted to do there um, without uh.
So that that's a good question. And so let me just speak for a moment about how functionally this works. So the official map provides a direction to uh, as part of development review about a connection that needs to be shown. Um, ultimately, if um, uh, if there was a proposal that took place on the Hill Farm and the roadway or rec path, it's, excuse me, the rec path was shown in a different location but still connected essentially point A to point B, then that's perfectly fine. The DRB would make that interpretation. If you would like to provide supplemental guidance, like uh, as you just described in the in the one that swoops down over to Langdon Road, that it uh, should be shown specifically being outside of the habitat areas, that's guidance that you can absolutely give. Um, there are footnotes to the official map that can be stated that, you know, this is intended to be shown outside of anything that is yada, 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 that kind of thing. Um, but it it is not, um, it it's it's showing a general connection, not a specific, it must exist in this precise location, other than the um, obviously the connection point to what already exists.
Paul Ingles.
I have a question for Michael. Michael, are you suggesting you don't want any path through there at all? Any constructed path other than the path that's just there?
Um, the the path that's proposed, which is from the end of Swift Street, east, directly east to Heinsburg Road, is what we're we were envisaging. If we are to have a second connection, uh, another twenty foot right of way, it could go from that pathway uh, that goes uh, west to east. It could go south to Langdon Road. Um, and this whole squiggly wide, yeah, like that. I don't like this whole uh, sick, now, now twenty foot right of way. Um, it's unnecessarily uh, it's just not, and it goes, it it goes through um, some of the habitat block, but um, Monica has suggested it could be avoided if it's moved. My preference would be what we were asked to do, which is one rec path from the end of Swift Street to Heinsburg Road and and that's it.
And you're okay, you're okay with having a bike path?
Yeah.
As opposed to just leaving the path that's there there?
There's no path there right now.
Or wherever the path is that people use to cut through. Okay.
Uh, Jeff Nick, I saw you up here, do you have a comment?
I just have a question. Um, depending on where these lines end up on the map, will they be strictly interpreted? Or will they be open for, you know, because we're uncertain of what we're gonna do here? Um, will we have some latitude as to where they end up?
Uh, so Jeff, um, the the key things that the i- in a development review that we would look at, um, at setting aside natural resources for a second, are the principal connection points. So if the commission were to decide that a rec path was to exist between Heinsburg Road and um, and Swift Street Extension, obviously we'd want it to touch Swift Street Extension at that end. That that would become essentially a fixed point. If we wanted, if the commission wanted it to connect to Langdon Road and the rec path, and we'd want to see it there. Beyond that, where it goes across your property would be largely um, up to you and the shape of the development. Um, of, you know, i- i- with 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 the caveat that i- if ultimately, say you put in a a a traffic signal on Heinsburg Road, then we probably want to see that connecting into that traffic signal. But where exactly would be entirely up to the uh, up to the latitude of your of your development? My only catch to that would be as if the commission wanted to give some guidance to say that, you know, it should, um, you know, the 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 second one that we just drew as a T, that the second one should not touch habitat block or something, then that could be clearly drawn to to avoid that. But this is a general, overall, we're speaking about general connections.
Okay, all right, because you know, Vtrans is gonna weigh in here at some point and decide where they want the connection. And they'll certainly, I think, trump anybody else in that process. So long as, long as there's some flexibility, that's, that seems good, okay. Thanks.
Michael?
Uh, I think I would, and I think the community would be satisfied if the bike path followed what what was a sixty foot right away and is now a twenty foot right away. And forget about the other one that goes straight across the Hill Farm. Um, as as the single rec path that we were, that that we were looking for. Um, and yes, it can be routed to avoid the habitat block and um, and habitat corridor that's uh, on the eastern, on the western side of Nick's property. So I'm satisfied with with that. And I think, I don't know, I'll ask Monica, because she's more uh, in tune with this than many of the rest of you, um, whether that would work for her.
Paul, maybe you can sketch on what Michael is proposing just on the map. I I think I get it, I think it'd be useful for people to see that.
Sorry, Paul.
Michael?
Is it something like what I just drew in the in the pink there, is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah, although it goes far into the hill properties, not necessarily. It could follow the the line that you have originally for that sixty foot right of way.
Okay, I was trying to avoid the habitat block.
Yeah, I don't think you have to. I know, you don't have to go that far, I don't think, but yeah. Something like that, somewhere in.
Something like that, though, Michael's.
Yes, yes, and then then scrub the other one.
I mean, you asked for my opinion. I I I would imagine that A, the Bike Ped Committee would be very interested in seeing a bike friendly way to get directly to Heinsburg Road from a, from a biking commuting perspective. And they don't want to have to dip back down. And I would think that um, but there needs to be flexibility for whatever the, you know, development wants to become. So uh, um, I I think we're gonna have to have a public hearing on this, and I would hope to hear from the Bike Ped. Um, as long as there isn't, uh, as long as the development has the flexibility to design and place what would be the direct connection um, to Heinsburg Road. I don't see the harm in that, because that's gonna be an area that's developed anyway. So all we're saying is we want one bike connection that goes down uh, south to that neighborhood. And we want one that's a a more direct route over to Heinsburg Road, which can be very beneficial for bike traffic. So I would support as drawn at the twenty foot or whatever that would need to be the twenty foot uh, width.
Can I just comment on that?
Um, Duncan? Go ahead, Duncan.
No, I I completely agree with Monica. I mean, assuming there's gonna be development on the Hill Farm, I don't want to exclude having a bike connection to that neighborhood because we only allowed it to go down to, I think that's the Rye neighborhood. Um, I I would like, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the more bike paths and connections we have, better. I I I think we make a mistake if we completely take that one off and don't allow it to be somehow connected.
Okay, um, other, Michael?
Yeah, I I guess I can live with that if they're both purely bike ped paths and no uh, way of getting a road in there at some point. And it would appear they would only, they'd only need one crossing over the wetland and the flood plain uh, to accommodate both of these um, rec paths. So I'd be satisfied with that.
Okay, um, uh, Jeff Nick?
I I mean, I just, I mean, I think you're, when when we come in with a plan, I think your development review board is probably gonna ask for multiple connections here. So I I'm not gonna be surprised by that. So we're, we're willing to work with the town on on rec pass and where they end up.
So, so the end result of all this is um, are people in general then okay with what Paul is showing on the official map as drawn with the reduced right of way width as we've agreed to? Uh, maybe I'll just do another quick scrawl poll. Duncan's thumbs up, Monica's thumbs up, Ted's thumbs up, Michael's thumbs up, Paul Ingles?
Um, I have a question.
All right.
When we do straw polls like this, do they have the same uh, rule of law that a vote would have? I don't want somebody coming back.
So Paul, if you choose, if the commission chooses to move forward with the policy, you will need to vote tonight or on another night on a public hearing on a specific thing. So that will be a formal vote. I think what Mike, what Bernie is doing is he's 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 getting the uh, consensus of the group so that there's only one formal vote.
Take an official motion, an official vote.
I didn't hear the vote, go ahead, sorry. Paul, I didn't hear what you said.
Well, Paul's right. I mean, all I'm trying to do at this point is fine tune it. Um, Paul is right in the, in the, um, I will ask people to make a motion and vote to move this forward. Um, but I wanted to make sure we got the discussion part out of the way and that everybody kind of conceptually agreed that, you know, I mean, obviously if there were, you know, major problems, then what I'm trying to do is get those resolved before we, you know, move forward. So um, so with that.
Are we gonna vote tonight then?
That's where I'm headed.
I'm in, all right.
So with that, is there any more discussion before we make a motion on the official map that Paul has presented? Monica, you have your hand up.
Just that um, looking like the map, but with the alteration that it would work to avoid habitat blocks. So whether that is on, presented visually or if it is in language within the motion, that um, that the southern, the southern.
Take a shot at the motion, Monica, we're good.
Did I do it? I'm looking for the language, Paul gave us draft language and I want to use what Paul used.
All right.
I moved. I'm doing it. I moved to warrant a public hearing to amend the official map as shown in our packet and described by OM dash twenty-one dash oh one.
And?
With, with, that's the first one, right? With uh, the reduction to twenty foot width and OM twenty-one dash oh two for the recommended date of July thirteenth and to approve the accompanying planning commission report.
And then did you want to have a little bit of language on avoiding?
Yes, in regard to that was the OM twenty-one oh one, right?
Yes.
So in our packet is described by OM twenty-one oh one with the, with um, with a cap of the twenty foot width and working to avoid habitat block.
Probably should say right away rather than width.
Twenty foot right away.
Is everybody clear on what Monica's motion is, Michael?
Is it clear that we're approving the twenty foot, the both, both paths?
Yes, or Monica?
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, because that's what's described in OM twenty-one dash one.
Okay, so everybody have a good understanding of what the motion is? Do I have a second?
A second.
Paul Ingles, um, Paul Connor, question?
Uh, just a, just a minor point that um, for the report, I presume that you will want to amend it slightly to get rid of the reference to a sixty foot right of way and instead speak about a twenty foot right of way.
Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to just quickly note to you, I said this in the packet, but the report was a little longer than it typically is um, for something like this because the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan um, stated that the city had concluded that the roadways should remain on the official map. And so what I was trying to do in there, um, based on what you described, was to discuss what has, what has transpired since that time to lead you to a conclusion that is still um, implementing the comprehensive plan, but changes the viewpoint as to what the action needs to be to resolve it. So I just wanted to, because the plan does, does say that. So I I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and that you were comfortable, because you have to conclude that you're comfortable that this is um, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Does the motion need to mention the the planning commission report at all?
Yes.
Okay.
You're required to approve a report in order to hold your public hearing.
But the report is separate from the motion that we're doing for the map.
You can do it as one motion or two, Monica did it as one motion.
Right, so I'd like to amend the motion to remove the last portion, which read, and to approve the accompanying planning commission report. Do you want me to reiterate the whole motion?
Okay, so we're gonna do a separate motion on the report, is that your ten?
Yes.
Um. Does everybody understand what Monica's motion is at this point? Or does, do we need to kind of just re- restate it so everybody understands?
It'd be good to restate it.
Okay.
We could play it back.
Do you want me to do that?
Give it another shot.
Okay. I moved to warrant a public hearing to amend the official map as shown in our packet and described by OM dash twenty-one oh one, with the exception of that being limited to a twenty foot right of way and to avoid the habitat block and OM twenty-one dash oh two for, for the recommended date of July thirteenth, period.
Do I have a second on that?
I seconded already.
Okay, Paul.
And and Monica, sorry, but you mean for the, for the southern swoop to avoid it, right? Avoid the habitat block, because by definition, a portion of it must cross the habitat block.
That's right.
Okay.
All right, um, and Paul's second, any further final discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Before, before we vote, I would like to be on record, my objection to having two paths to be on record, although, but in the interests of getting this done, uh, I'm willing to vote.
Okay, so let's uh, vote on the motion. Um, all in favor, Monica, Duncan, Ted, Paul Ingles, Michael and I. So it looks like it's unanimous.
Great.
Then we're all set on. Then we're all set on that. It was unanimous. And then Monica, did you want to make a second motion on the report?
Yes, and I'd like to find, just to I get, I get the do's. I'd like to find within the report where that language was.
Monica, it's, it's on the last page of it, page six of the report. It talks about it just above where it gets into OM-21-02. It says, upon review of the information above, the results that recently complete reports, et cetera, et cetera. The planning commission concludes the following concerning, and then down below it talks about further. So essentially what, what I think you'd be wanting to do is to conclude that the replacement of the right of way with a 20 foot right of way is, remains consistent with all of the infrastructure objectives of the city, et cetera. So if that's what you want to be saying.
Okay. And basically by saying that we're, that the motion would be to simply alter the alter the width from 60 to 20. And therefore still meeting the comp plan is what we need the motion to basically say. So let me give.
If you would like to advance it, then yes. That's you, that becomes your conclusion that you are comfortable that the comprehensive plan is still being met.
Right. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the planning commission report with the alteration of reducing the retained planned right of way from 60 feet to 20 feet. On page six.
Ted seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
All right, we'll get it going. We will set a public hearing for July 13th.
Beautiful. And I, before we, because this happened quickly, this, this part, there, Paul, your comment about future generations, that's not within this report that we just approved. That was your preface. Right?
The, right, the preference, the, the regulate, the, sorry, the report only said while the reserved 60 foot right of way retains flexibility for future generation to review and assess needs at that time. So I'm just going to replace that with the recreation path will provide connectivity for best pedestrians and bicyclists between neighborhoods as well as to Veterans Memorial Park. I think that's what I'll say and remove the last part of that sentence.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Moving on to the item six, the LDRs. Discussion with the city attorney.
Yes, so Amanda Lafferty is here to, has joined us this evening. Amanda, are you still there? And I asked Amanda to come in and as you had requested to give you a little overview of takings. So I asked her to keep it fairly general. If there are specific questions, please feel free to ask her if you like. And I will step back and let you go ahead.
Okay. So just general background, the, the term takings and gets thrown around a bit and by everybody. I'm not accusing any one particular person. And the question though needs to or the, the purpose behind it needs to be remembered. And that's that so as an initial, because there are numerous types of taking, when takings, when the that amendment to the US Constitution was added, they actually did not anticipate or, or think about takings beyond the government, you know, showing up on your property and saying, we want a road across your property or we're going to set up you know, a coal mining use for the US government on the property. So what then became more common is the the regulations of land that that can perhaps rise the level of a taking. So, but the Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court has said that, you know, judges and courts must remain cognizant that government regulation by definition involves the adjustment of rights for the public good. So that's the you know, they are going to look first at, okay, well, that's often the result of regulations. But there are kind of two types of takings that are oh, and another step back, taking, takings are not necess, they aren't disallowed. The, the what is required then is if you, if the government's going to take your land, then you are entitled to be compensated for it because again, it's for the public good. And so only the landowner should not be responsible for the, something that benefits the public. So there are two types of kind of per se takings that will automatically be deemed a taking that requires compensation from the government. And one of those, as I said before, is the permanent physical invasion of the property. So we're not talking about that. The second possibility is regulations that completely deprive an owner of all economically beneficial use of their property. That is generally not what, what that's not been raised as an issue. And it would, that would be a very difficult, I think, case for any property owner to make. Well, with regard to a lot of regulations, but specifically with regard to the the regulations that sorry, that the city planning commission is considering for in articles 10 and 12. So then the, the next question or the next type of taking, and this is the, this is the one that can get you into, get anybody into trouble is because the, it's there are factors that a court's going to look at, but there, unfortunately, the test doesn't say if you do X, it's a taking. If you do Y, it's a taking. It's no, it's not a bright line rule. But the factors that a court's going to evaluate are mostly economic factors. And so that's the question of what's the economic impact of the regulation? And particularly the extent to which the regulation has interfered with distinct investment backed expectations. And the court has, and this is a, it's related, but not directly on point, but a mere diminution in value of the property is not going to be considered in and of itself a taking. So and so that also goes hand in hand with the, one of the per se takings that if, if you're deprived of all economically beneficial use of your property, that is going to be a per se taking that is, if you're, the value of your property has been diminished, but not totally removed by a regulation, it will not in, overall be considered a taking. That, and that's the first question is, is this even a taking before then the the question is, okay, well, what relief, what compensation is a property owner entitled to? And so that's the, the question that we're trying to look at. And, and the questions, again, they are what's the magnitude of a regulation's economic impact and the degree to which it interferes with legitimate property interests? So the, you know, those are the kind of general questions a court's going to look at. And so it's not going to be as simple as, well, you know, I had an idea about putting, you know, a motel or, or something on my property in the SEQ and this will prevent me from doing that. The the question is both well, it's, it's, the language is a distinct investment backed impact. Not, you know, an idea that you had for potentially using your property in a certain way and you can't do that anymore. The other well, another thing to keep in mind is if the claim is sorry, I'm looking for if the claim is that if somebody wants to make a claim that the application of government regulations to their property or project affects the taking of the property, that the court will not have the ability to consider that question. In other words, it won't be ripe for the court's consideration until the government entity charged with implementing the regulations has reached a final decision regarding the application of the regulations to the project and property. So they'll have to get essentially a no answer before they can go, go to court and say, wait a minute, this is a taking. And then they would still have to demonstrate that that this has, that the regulation has removed all economically beneficial use of a legitimate property interest. So that, I, I hope that kind of provides the, just a general overview of takings claims are not necessarily easy to make in connection with what's called a, you know, a regulatory taking. And if you have a, some use of your property. Generally, obviously that there, there, it does depend, as I say, on the impacts on a particular in connection with a particular property and or project. But the, the generally, if you have a use of your property. Then the, you don't have your property has not been taken under the amendment to the to the US Constitution. Which is applicable to the state of Vermont.
Commissioner questions? Ted?
All due respect, I'm not quite sure if I can say that it was clear to me. But let's use an example. If someone has a forest and the city has identified it as a habitat block, which would mean that there should not be development in there, is that taking?
If they just had, so just having habitat block on your property. In and of itself does not I, I think that you start with kind of the the level of impact on the property. So as an initial matter, if there's property available for development that is not within a habitat block. That is going to be that, that's going to be crucial to the analysis. The second question or one of the other questions is, okay, if, to the extent that there that development is allowed on the property i- in terms of there is property that does not have habitat block on it. So there is, if it's partial, if you have a parcel of land that is partially covered by habitat block, but is partially not, then the question is also, okay, well, how can we if, if you can in fact have a use on that portion that is not covered by a habitat block. Then again, it, I think that will be crucial to the analysis of whether there's been a takings. The, and then just generally, there are also, I know, there are several, I call them outlets in the regulations of essentially ways that property owners with habitat blocks or, excuse me, habitat connections, there's, those are the two types of resources that are going to be they're, they're, they, if they're on your property, they're on your property. And as, as written currently, you can't say, well, I've gone on, I, I've retained an expert who says that this actually isn't a habitat block. What, what the city has decided is we're going to decide if you have habitat block or habitat, habitat connection on your property. So again, it's, it's going to come down to what are the impacts to you? What's, what space is available on your property for development? What is it? What is the level of development? If you, if you can put a use on the property, even if it's possibly as small as a single family dwelling, rather than, you know, a commercial use, then that will be crucial to the analysis of whether you have, whether you have a regulatory taking of your property.
Ted, are you still all set or?
Well, just, I'm sorry Duncan, if I could just. So are you saying that? Well, let's have two examples. If I have, you know, 20 acres and it's all forested. Okay. And it's developable, but it's also been identified as a habitat block. And the city comes in and, well, city said it's a habitat block. Would that, is that taking if we tell the developer that they're not able to develop that forest?
Well.
Sorry, I didn't.
Ted, you mean the owner.
I apologize. Yeah, the owner who might be the developer. The owner, thank you for clarification.
So under, if you're, are you asking in the context of the the regulations that are, you know, under review currently? Because there are new, as I say, outlets for property owners who have either habitat blocks or habitat connections on their property. There is also just generally without regard to those specifically for set, set up in articles 10 and 12, there's also just a general variance that is.
Amanda, I, I think Ted is asking it independently of the specific regulations of just boil it down to if the, if there was a 20 acre parcel and the city said this whole thing is in its entirety a habitat block and habitat block does not allow for development. Is that your question Ted? Just like not in the context of our specific regulation, but if it just said that many words, what would the result of that be?
Right.
Is that, is that your question Ted?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay, so I I. So going back, I mean, potentially, potentially, yes. But. Potentially, yes, but. Again, I, I don't think the, it's not that simple because in the end, the. You need to have a decision from. In this case, the DRB that. Says whether you can or cannot do what you're proposing to do on your property. And. Secondly, there, there are generally. In state law, there's an option, so without regard to these specific proposed amendments. There is. There, excuse me, there, there is a, a provision in, under state law that, and that municipalities must have that. Allow for the possibility of a variance. Now, there, there's a, a set of standards that you have to consider, but. If, if that would have to, I think that would have to be also part of the analysis again, is first you get a decision. And as part of that, you would have to have said, okay, well, if you're going to deny my proposal. I'm also going to apply for a variance. And here's why I should be able to get that. And if that is also denied, then the, the, but. Again, if you have. Value left in your property and you are able to develop it. Somehow, um, it is possible, and moreover, there's. Depending on if you're in the SEQ, I don't know, but that's another quote unquote outlet that someone has is if it's in the. I can't. Okay, that's right.
You're multitasking like a queen.
I love it, but, you know, if I whisper it right in front of everybody, there's no way they'll hear it. So. Excuse me, so the. That, that's another quote unquote outlet is depending on. Whether you can sell development rights. But without getting into whether that would specifically be allowed, that, that is. That's another outlet.
Okay, so Duncan and then Michael and then Paul Ingles in that order.
I'm going to give you kind of maybe a similar scenario to Ted's, but maybe slightly different. We're looking at regulating possibly grasslands and ag lands. So I have a 10 acre field, developable land. Suddenly, it's, it's all regulated now, it's ag soil, it's grassland, I can't develop it, but I could still farm it. So I've lost the economic value of putting houses on there, but it could still be used for farming. I don't have a case for a taking there?
Um. If, if the, if the regulation is that.
No, no, I can't build on it because it's all regulated now.
So.
Farm it.
Right, and so again, it, the. It is not a taking. Generally, if you are deprived of the highest and best use of your property. The, the main question is, or one of the main questions is whether you have. Some value left in your property and or whether you have the ability to develop your property in some way. Because that is one of the, the bundle of rights that. The, that is important for property ownership. It's the right to exclude others. And I'm, this is, this is kind of, again, the basis for takings claims is if, if you still have the ability to exclude others. If you still have the ability to use it somehow, whether living there or somehow making money from it. Those are rights that people expect. To be able to, those are uses they can make of their property. And as long as the regulation is not completely preventing one or more of those, those rights. Then it's not a taking.
Okay. So are you good with that for now Duncan?
Sort of.
Sort of.
Can I, can I ask it in a slightly different way Duncan?
Yeah.
So Amanda, I think what Duncan is trying to get at is, is the sole retention of agriculture? Assuming that it's farmable land. Does that pass muster? Or is that sort of borderline because in Duncan's example, they could not build a house on it, for instance? Or a sugar shack or somewhere, something like that? It is, is there a line at which it becomes? Less obviously. An, an, an issue, I guess, is how I would just maybe try to phrase it differently. Because I think he was trying to bear, take it down to the bare minimum of no development except farming is allowed.
And so the, the idea is, does the regula, is that the impact of the regulation essentially? That you buy the regulation really, what results is the, you know, it doesn't say that in the regulation. But what the result is, is that geez, the only thing I can use my, my land for is for farming.
Or if it said it, it could also just say it straight out, I think, either way in Duncan's scenario.
So. That's interesting, I, I. Unclear, and I, I want to think about it, about the impact of telling somebody, this is the only thing you can use your property for. As opposed to. The, and, and I think that's different because. If you regulate, for instance, grasslands. I'm not. Sure that it's. As black and white, that the only potential use is farming, but. I think if you're going to. Not as clear if you're telling somebody, this is the only use you can put your property to. As opposed to saying this is, there's a resource or there's something on, about your property that. Is important to us that we don't think, as the, as the city, and we don't think it should be developed for certain reasons. As long as there are. Outlets, which automatically there is under state law with the variance criteria, but. Setting, including that, there, I, I think it would be difficult to make a takings claim because. You have. A use, maybe not the highest and best use, maybe not the one that you really, really wanted for your property. But if, unless you have. You know, basically a plan and, you know, a, a distinct investment back. So that's, you know, you have a, an actual plan and you've, you've. You've lined up money financing, you've gotten, you've basically lined up all your. You've got all your ducks in a row, then it would be difficult for it to be considered a takings. But. Limiting someone to only a particular use is that, that would be. Different. And I didn't. What, during my research or preparation for this, I didn't think about the issue of the city saying in a regulation, the. The only thing you can do with your property is, is. Something. That would be, I, I, I actually would want to look into that a little bit more, but.
Okay, thanks Amanda, so I'm going to ask a, a quick procedural clarifying question and then Michael is next. Paul Ingles is after that and Ted is after that and Monica is after that. And then I do have some comments in the public domain as well, I'm just going to write down the order here. So I said, Michael. Paul, Monica and Ted, right? In that order, all right. So my quick clarifying question is, is this Amanda, and I think what I heard you say, and you can just, a quick, hopefully yes or no on this. So basically, the way it would work though, is, is we're going to come up with a regulation. In terms of a taking, the, the property owner, the developer, whatever, has to actually come in with a plan to the development review board. Based on our regulations and the development review board needs to say, no, sorry, you can't do that. The regulations don't allow it. And then they could do, they could ask for a variance and the development review board would say, no, not doing a variance. And at that point, that's the, that's the only point at which then they could, they could go to court. So. In terms of the regulations, we write what we write, it's still got to go through the, the development review process. And the, the, the remedy, the court remedy doesn't occur until. All the options have run out with respect to development review, is that correct?
That, yes, generally that is correct, as long as you are not making. A claim that a regulation is unconstitutional on its face, which. In which case you would be claiming that under no circumstances could the regulation. Not. Violate the constitution. In this, this case, the question is. The regulations as applied to my property don't allow me to do X, Y and Z. So yes, the, the question doesn't become ripe until you've gotten a decision from the, in this case, the DRB.
Okay, thank you. So like I said, we're going to go Michael, Paul, Monica, Ted, and then if we're done with the planning commission at that point, I do have a couple. Public comments, but let's start with Michael.
Yeah, well, one of my questions was the same as yours Bernie, because I thought I heard. Amanda say that the DRB will decide, but she clarified that DRB has to follow the regulations, interpret the regulations. So. Amanda, I'll take an example, I also have, I have 20 acres and it's fully wooded. And it's, it's a habitat block, so I can't develop it. Is silviculture exempted by the state?
So. Yes, under. Under state law. There are certain uses that municipalities cannot require zoning permits for, and they cannot regulate. That would be agricultural uses and silvicultural uses.
Okay, so now I've got my wooded lot, in theory, I could. I could cut down the trees and plant new ones and basically harvest the wood.
You're breaking up there Michael, can you get closer to your mic?
That, that. That question, is that better?
Nope.
It was like so static or, or something, yes.
Yeah, so the next question is, you mentioned, it, it has to be, the regulation, if I understood, has to be. Or represent a public good. And is it, is, is environmental protection, which in, which impacts public health? If you destroy a wetland or cut down a forest or. Something like that. That, does that, the preservation of, of these. Of these natural resources that we are trying to regulate, is that a public good in that sense?
Well, I, and I, I'm sorry, I, the. One of the main reasons that the, this amendment to the US Constitution was adopted was. Or, excuse me, the, because when it was first adopted, the government, the US government didn't really anticipate that takings would, would be. They didn't anticipate that regulatory takings would, would come up. So. What the court said, and, and this is why I'm trying to. Municipalities do have to have, you know, the. They have police powers to adopt ordinances and amongst those are protection of. Natural resources for a variety of reasons, some of them because they. Not protecting them could lead to problems like flooding or something, or there's also, there, there are other reasons. But the reason I mentioned the public good was because. The courts remain cognizant of the fact that by definition, government regulation involves the adjustment of rights for the public good. And so. The adjustment of rights for the public good. Municipalities have the right to adopt regulations. And some, some people are going to be benefited by those, some people are not going to be as benefited by those. And so that's, that was all I was trying to say is that, you know. Municipalities, that is the result of regulations often. So, yes.
Yeah.
I think the city has this. The city has the right to decide that certain. Resources are worthy of protection and that certain. Areas of the city should be developed and should be developed perhaps in certain ways in terms of, you know, a list of possible uses. But. The. I can decide what. What things are public good, and I think the courts have upheld those policy decisions in, in a lot of instances. Is that? Because I, I got concerned, I had mentioned public good at the beginning, and so I, I just wanted to be sure that I was clear why I, I had mentioned it.
Okay, Paul Ingles.
Got my, my 20 acres of woods and I go to the DRB and tell them I want to build a resort there. With a small hotel, et cetera, et cetera, and they say, no, you can't do this, this is a habitat block, it's 100% habitat block. And some smart member of the DRB says, well, Mr. Mitek, you could. Create cross-country ski paths in your forest and you can charge entrance fees for that. Is that a sufficient economic develop, uh, value for my, even though it's not, it is something at least. Would that make it?
That's just what is required for. Essentially to, to, for a matter to be ripe, so that someone can't just go to court and say. They, the city adopted this regulation and it has this impact on my property and it shouldn't be allowed, it's a taking. What courts have said is. You can't raise that question without first getting an answer from the municipality. You, you can't come to us and basically predict what the city will or will not approve. And so, yes, it. That's, that's the minimum requirement before you can go to court. But that doesn't mean that what your propose, that your proposal and the denial, the denial of your proposal would constitute a taking.
Paul Ingles, you're up.
Oh, I just would like Amanda to confirm that the law is that it's not a taking unless the landowner is deprived of all economically reasonable use of their property.
I'm sorry, you're asking if that, is it takings? Yes.
No, this is the law. The law is that it is not a taking unless landowner is deprived of all economically reasonable use or value of their property.
No, I, I wanna make a, let me parse that out a little. There are two things that are essentially automatically takings. And that is, like I said, a physical invasion of the property and if a regulation has the effect of denying somebody all economically beneficial use of their property. The, if someone wants to claim that something is a takings and they're not making one of those claims. They're essentially, they have to claim or demonstrate that the magnitude of the government's, sorry, I'm looking for, yeah, the magnitude or character of the burden is, you know, significant. And that the regulatory burden is not just, excuse me. And this, another issue that they'll, in this this analysis that they'll look at is the magnitude, is the regulatory burden and its distribution among property owners. So that's the difference. I don't think it's correct to say that it's not a taking unless someone has lost all economically beneficial use of their property.
Paul, are you all set? Monica's next.
Two things. When you say property, you're saying property in full, right? Like someone can't claim, "Oh, this portion of my property now I can't do anything with," right? You're, when you, because there's remaining, so you're talking about the property parcel in full, right?
Right, the, it's, every, there's going to be, yes, if you can't say, "Oh, I can't use this parcel if you have, or part of my parcel if you do have the ability to develop elsewhere."
So this is really more of a comment than a question, but to me, this only further clarifies, while I agree that the Planning Commission should continue down our separate paths of resolving this and then moving to PUDs, I do feel it's best for the city to process both packets, if you will, our environmental regs along with the PUDs at the same time because the conservation PUD so directly connects and protects and offers the variance at a local level. So that's just, I think that is the smartest thing for the city to do is go forward with those two at the same time. That would be the City Council.
Thanks Monica. Ted?
Yes, still muted.
There you go. Following up on Duncan's question with regard to a grasslands, are we, would we be in a better position if someone did have 10 acres of grasslands to, rather than to say, "All of it must remain grasslands", that a certain percentage could be developed on? And I don't know what that percentage could be in order to make sure that there's not a court case.
Well, and I'm sorry, I, I don't know, or I guess, I'm not as familiar with grasslands as I am for, you know, with wooded habitat or wetlands or, so I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Ag land, would ag land be, would that be the same? Ag land or grasslands, are they both difficult to?
I think Amanda, what maybe Ted is trying to say is a a resource that has been locally prioritized as being important.
Okay.
Is that correct Ted?
Yep.
Okay. What, what would be prioritized or what would be better?
What the city has prioritized as being important to not be built upon, regardless of whether it's grasslands or ag lands or whatever. Something that isn't determined at the state and federal level like a floodplain, something that is locally determined to be important.
Whether that's allowed, is that the?
No, I think Ted's question was, would the city be in a better legal position to allow for something to take place, a house, a proportion of the property, rather than to say zero? Is that your question Ted?
Right, exactly.
I'm sorry, yes. And that is, I immediately thought of the, there are provisions in the SEQ that I think were adopted at the same time that the sub-districts in the SEQ were created that allowed certain, something like if your property, if your parcel was a certain number, was more than a certain number of acres, you could develop it with no more than three lots and/or houses. And so I will say, yes, it is to allow at least some minimal use is always, that's an outlet from, in a way to avoid someone, it would make it much more difficult for someone to claim a taking.
Let's see, Michael, and then, you know, we're kinda running late and I would like to at least look at the public chat and see if they have anything. So maybe one more from Michael and then if it's all right with everybody, I'd like to just go to the chat and see if there's anything.
Yeah, it's a quick one. I'm not sure why Ted needs, why we need to talk about proportionality. If it's a grassland or it's ag land, the grassland can be grazed, can be haved. And ag land can be farmed, so there's no, nobody being proud of its economic value. So I don't know why we would want to have, make a provision for, "Well, let's let, let's let him use, develop 30% of it or 10% of it." And then the last one puts Amanda on the spot because all in all, it would appear that the rules we've drafted so far, I don't, I don't see any examples that jump out as possible takings. I don't know what your opinion is on that, Amanda. That's my last question. Thank you Bernie.
On, certainly on their base and well, and probably is applied because but there are, if, if someone has habitat block and/or habitat connections on their property, there are ways to allow it under the regulations for you to, you know, I would say make a proposal so that the net outcome of, is the same or better. There is also the possibility of allowing, if, I think it's 70% of your property is covered with a habitat block or connection that you can, essentially, there's a priority list, but you can essentially remove up to, I think it's 30% of your parcel and make that developable. So, yes, those, those types of, that flexibility makes it difficult for someone, makes it very difficult for someone to make a taking claim.
Thanks Amanda. I'm actually gonna spend a few minutes now going through the chat. I've had several members.
Coming up, but I couldn't.
Here, so I'm just gonna kinda start at the top of the chat and call people's names. And if you're, I would just ask for the public, if your question's already been answered, just say you're good and we'll move on. And we'll try to get through this. So I'm gonna scroll up here to to get to kinda the first person. So it looks like in terms of our specific discussion, Roseanne Greco, you made a comment on on, you know, whether or not we can be sued and stuff like that. So at 8:51. So are you okay, Roseanne, or do you have something else you'd like to ask?
I think I'm okay. I thought, I thought I understood this because we've been through this a number of times. And my understanding was, as long as a landowner can get some economic value out of their land, it may not be the one they want or they would choose, but there's some economic value left on their land, then it cannot be considered a taking. A taking is everything. You can't do anything. I thought that's what Amanda was saying earlier, but then I wasn't sure.
So Amanda, is that, is Roseanne's interpretation correct?
And maybe I confused things when Mr. Ingles, I think, asked a question. I, I, again, it's not a firm test. It's, you know, an analysis that a court will undertake, but it, I think it is correct that if, if you have the ability to get some use, and it does not have to be the, what to you would be the highest and best use, but as long as you can have a use of your property, then it will be very difficult for you to successfully claim that there's a regulatory taking.
Right, that is the explanation we were given years ago by yourself and other lawyers, which is rather simple. As long as there's some economic value, it can't be considered a taking. So my question was, I don't understand why we hear even commissioners and counselors saying, "We're gonna be sued for a taking because we're rezoning and changing the use or the allowance of, you know, I guess, how many units." That's not a taking, but we still, I mean, maybe after this session, we won't hear that anymore, but but, you know, anyway. And landowners say the same thing all the time. Whenever the city proposes to rezone, to change something, they cry "taking", but it's, it's not. From what you just said and what we were, you know, anyway.
And I'll read, just because this is, this is the quote that I was looking for that I couldn't find earlier. "Beginning with an earlier case, the court recognized that government regulation of private property may in some instances be so onerous that its effect is tantamount to a direct appropriation or ouster, and that such regulatory takings may be compensable under the Fifth Amendment." In Justice Holmes's storied but cryptic formulation, "While property may be regulated to a certain extent, if regulation goes too far, it will be recognized as a taking." The rub, of course, has been and remains, "How to discern how far is too far." So, that's, that, because someone, a municipality hasn't had to contend with any taking claims, you know, when there's always a change can, it's the unknown to some extent. And so there's always a concern, but, and it's not, it's a tough claim to make, but it's not impossible. So.
Anybody can sue anybody for anything in the US.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Paul, Connor, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just quickly, just to try to summarize what Amanda's been saying. And Amanda, I'm gonna try to put it in English words and you tell me if I'm correct. There are circumstances where it is clear that there is a takings, as you've described.
Yes.
It's harder to say that something is not a takings. What we can describe is what is a takings. Beyond that, it's a case-by-case analysis that goes before the court around this economic, beneficial economic use. Right?
Exactly, yes.
And then to sort of Ted's question from earlier, without getting to numbers, the more obvious that there is an economic value that can be obtained, the stronger the case.
Yes.
So while, so while, you know, allowing farmland may very well pass the test, allowing farmland and a house is more, is a stronger case. Is that an accurate way of saying this?
Yes, that was, that was my thought. I, when I said, I immediately thought of some of the options available for.
Right. And I don't wanna get into specifics, but broadly speaking, because it has to be tested on a case-by-case basis, the more that it's an obvious case.
The better.
Good. Andrew Chalnack, are you all set or do you have something you'd like to add?
Thanks Bernie. I know this has been a long night and so I apologize, but I think it might have been my public comment that set us off on this road and I apologize for that too. But so I just would like maybe just a minute or two if I could. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, I have a question, but just, I mean, my perspective is that there are, Amanda, some bounds to what Justice Holmes said. I mean, the courts have said how far is too far, at least have a standard. And I think it is whether the landowners are part of reasonable economic use and a question of what's reasonable, but I think that is the standard as I read all the case law. You may disagree with that. And just, but maybe to bring it kinda down to facts. So in my public comment, I referenced a particular development where a developer wanted to build 160 homes on 80 acres. And I said, you know, we don't, we don't have to let them do that, right? There's nothing that compels us to do that. And people that throw around the word takings are not, are not accurate that we're compelled to do that. And so just to be very simple, if developer had 80 acres and we said, "You know what? Because it's valuable natural resources, you can only build five or 10 homes." Would that be takings?
You can only build five or 10 homes? Is that what? Under, so if the regulations allowed five or 10 homes on a parcel, it would, it would be difficult, I think, to claim that there's a regulatory taking.
Okay, thanks. So just to, right, because that's really, I mean, I don't think anyone's really talking about completely eliminating. I mean, I wanted to ask that question too, but I mean, we're talking about how far can we go into the Constitution? I think you can go really, really far, probably further than anyone here is really talking about. But just to push the point, and I think it's been discussed before, if we were to say on those 80 acres, the only thing you can do is farm and you can, you know, silviculture, because that's what Vermont law allows. I think I heard you say, "That wouldn't be a takings either, if the commission chose to go that far."
I don't think I.
I mean, you can't build a home, but you can do what Vermont law allows, silviculture and agriculture.
Well, I know I did say, yes, under state law, there are those two uses, municipalities cannot regulate them under.
And though to continue to do those under Vermont laws, is that sufficient to eliminate takings?
I, I guess it depends to some extent on your property because again, it's, it is a, it's a case-by-case analysis and the facts of a specific property are going to matter. But if you have a use of your property, it's, it, under regulation. So if the application of a regulation to your parcel means, if the result is you have some use of your property, it's very, I think it would be very difficult for you to claim my, it's a taking.
No, thank you. I mean, I'll just throw out just one last comment. I mean, I'm aware there's this case in the Ninth Circuit where landowner had a cattle farm and wanted to cut down trees and the town said, "You can't." And the court said, "It's not a takings because, you know, you have a cattle farm, you continue to graze cattle and, you know, you don't have any right to cut down your trees." And that was, so anyway, that kinda, you know, speaks to me as to the, really how far you'd have to go to have a takings. And I'm done. Thanks.
Thanks Andrew. Sandy Dooley, I got you next on the list. Is there anything you wanna add or are you good?
No, well, just a minute. Is there case law on change, essentially downzoning? For example, if you've held a piece of property for 10 or 15 years and it's, and during that entire time, including when you purchased it, the zoning would allow you to build, say, 80 homes. And then, all of a sudden, it's changed so that you can only build. And then all of a sudden it's changed so that you can only build six. Is there case law that addresses that, the impact of down zoning?
I'm sure there is. I, I, I did not look at that in preparing for tonight, but my, my thought is that that would, the, the question would involve a look at, do you have distinct investment backed expectations that this interferes with? That, that, that down zoning interfered with? And if, if, if you haven't done anything to attempt to develop your property with the, the, you said 80 units, then it would, that would be, you, you wouldn't be able to make that, that demonstration. That, oh, hey, you know, I, I've been talking to these specialists. I've, I've gotten these plans ready. I've gotten this financing, you know, there's, if, if you don't have certain investments made in both time and money on, on a particular proposal, then the mere fact of a, of a down zoning would not, would not necessarily mean a, a taking.
But what if you did have evidence that you had made investments based on this expectation?
That, it would, it would depend. I mean, it would have to be a lot. And I also tend to think that, I'm, I'm thinking of the, you know, keep someone monitoring what is going on in a municipality. And, you know, this is, that's one of, the, one of the ways that a municipality avoids kind of quote unquote, a run on permits is to adopt interim bylaws. But, so, but I, I, I just think it would be difficult to have lined up, you know, a lot of information and evidence of distinct investment backed expectations. And you haven't talked to the municipality, the municipality at all. And, and you didn't move things along when it became an option to downzone, but.
I understand you can't give a yes or no answer, but I can't speak for the planning commission. But I think what we're talking about, at least with the environmental protection standards, without getting on to the PUDs, is significant down zoning. So if I were on the planning commission, I or staff, I would say, I really would like you to look into the case law on down zoning and takings. That's all.
Thank you, Sandy. Frank Von Turkovich, you're up if you still want to weigh in here.
Thank you, Bernie. Amanda, my, my question is, are you troubled at all by the idea that South Burlington would be looking at land parcels that are similarly situated? In other words, let's say you have a 20 acre parcel with trees on it and right next door you have a 19 acre parcel with trees on it, but the city has decided to regulate 20 acre parcels and prohibit development on them as being habitat blocks, but leaves the 19 acre parcel untouched. Does that present a problem?
I guess I'm.
Not, I don't expect you to have an instant answer for that. I got it out as a rhetorical question, really. So, but connected to that is my next question is, does the city have original authority to regulate these types of environmental areas? Things like, does a parcel have trees on it? Does a parcel have grass on it? I mean, we're all familiar with the idea that the state allows cities to regulate wetlands under certain limits. But is, does the city of South Burlington have original authority to regulate things like grasslands and forest lands?
I, I guess, I, certain, I don't know that certain resources are called out in particular, that they are specifically mentioned in chapter 117, but of title 24, but I, I don't see that as, you know, facially and automatically a, a problem for a municipality to regulate certain aspects or, or, you know, physical characteristics of property. It just, it would depend on, sorry, my dog is distracting me, but it would depend on the resource and the reason for its protection, among, among other things. And I, just because it's not specifically listed in chapter 117, I don't think that necessarily means that that it's not something that the municipality could adopt regulations regarding.
Bernie, could I, could I just finish by saying, I would, I would really ask the planning commission to consider spending some more time on this issue. Because from here on out, if the city goes forward with this and decides to implement these regulations, I think the, the fundamental question of the authority to do it and then whether these regulations as, as being planned are actually fair to, to similarly situated landowners is something that we should spend a little more time with. And I know tonight's, tonight's not the night to do it. It's already way too late. But if the commission can make some more time to do this, it might be helpful.
Yep. Thanks Frank. And I do think, I'm going to try to wrap it up at this point. Monica brings up a good point that I was actually thinking about at the same time. And that's that it's, it's getting late. We've certainly asked a lot of questions of Amanda. Her, her kids and her dog have been very, very patient with us. And so I, I'd kind of like to wrap it up. Paul Connor and Amanda, I do think that, that maybe homework assignment in terms of, I think Sandy Dooley brought up a good comment in terms of, you know, down zoning and maybe doing a little research on that. I think that Frank brought up a good comment on, on whether we have the authority to regulate it or not. You know, we probably do, but it would be good to at least look at that because undoubtedly the question is going to come up. And, and then, you know, maybe just take a quick scan through the, the chat and see if there's other particular questions that, that maybe Amanda, you felt, you know, a little pressured or struggled to answer, that, you know, maybe spending a little time on it and then maybe coming back to us. Maybe not the next meeting, but, you know, maybe the meeting after, depending on how long it takes. But to, to come back to us with the answers to some of these things would be good. And then I would just add that if there's other stuff that the commissioners feel were not adequately addressed. Paul, if it's okay with you, maybe a, you know, would it be all right, an email from the commissioner to you that, hey, ask Amanda this too, kind of thing. And that way we kind of avoid doing it now, but maybe we get a, hopefully a fairly short list of, of additional questions we can ask Amanda. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, for, I'm sorry Bernie, at the same time, I heard nothing tonight that Amanda, every answer Amanda gave that I heard, especially in conjunction with our conservation PUD supports what we've been doing. So I hope that we do not stall out our progression.
No, no, I'm not proposing that.
I'm just, I know, I know, I'm just, but, but I know that it can happen. And I know that the city will be asking the same questions. And I know Amanda has already seen our draft and would have raised issues that the city was concerned about and she hasn't. Or if she has, they've already been addressed within the drafts. So just to be clear, you know, great, it was very helpful hearing, but, you know, we're, I think we're in a good place. Maybe we do a straw poll, but let's, I hopefully this doesn't take another agenda item from our time. Yeah.
All I'm saying is I agree, we need to keep moving on. But also, you know, the public has asked some questions that maybe we've thought about, maybe we haven't. And if we've thought about them and we're cool with where we're at, that's great. If there's a red flag, it would be good to know. And, and that's, that's my only point. But I'm not proposing slowing anything down. I just want to make sure that there aren't any red flags that we need to be aware of. That's all. So.
Flags have already been addressed in the draft? I, just to be clear to the public and from Amanda's perspective, she has looked at this. Any flags that she raised, we did address in what we put forth for public hearing. There are no red flags in the current draft that we're talking about. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
There are no red flags in the current draft based on Amanda's current review. However, the public has asked some questions. And if Amanda's already thought about those and it's covered and there's nothing to worry about, great, then that's fine and we move on and we're done. If the, the public has asked a question that Amanda says, oh gee, you know, I didn't really think about that when I reviewed it, it would be good to think about that. That's all. So again, I'd like to kind of wrap this up. So Michael, Michael and then Paul, and then, and then I think we really should try to let Amanda go after Michael and Paul.
Yeah, it's no question for Amanda. It's a question for Paul as to whether we can get the minutes. You know, we're, we're only getting the minutes from May the 20th in this package. It doesn't give us a lot of time to review them, especially in preparation for tonight's meeting. Is there a way we can get these drop minutes in, on, on the website a little sooner than now?
Yeah. Michael, I'll, I'll check in with Sue. I know there's been a plethora of meetings in the last week or so, but I'll check in with her on status of that. And as soon as we get them, we do turn around to put them on the website. I don't necessarily inform the commission when we post them, but if you'd like me to let you know as soon as we have them posted, I'm happy to send a quick note. Perfect.
I just looked for them last week and I didn't find them. That's all. Thank you.
Paul, you should have everything by now and should have had it for weeks.
I will double check that I didn't miss a.
Was that with Amanda then, guys? I'm sorry. I feel like Amanda's really gone overtime for us.
Right.
Amanda, go and, go and enjoy your children and let, and let them have the goddamn ice cream.
Hold it.
Paul Engels, do you have something quick?
Yes, I hope that people understand now that we know what we're talking about.
Okay. Thanks. Amanda, I think, thank you very, very much for your patience and your time. We really appreciate it.
Not, not a problem. This is my job.
Okay. Have a good one. Thanks. So I've got 10 minutes to 10. Can we save grasslands and ag soils till next time?
Yeah. You want to knock off the minutes?
Let's just, we've got the neighborhood rep to the airport. I'd like to kind of just, Paul has done a Herculean job of, of trying to draft people and he's come up with three people that, that I think will be very useful and qualified for, for this committee. And maybe Paul, you can just run through an executive summary, 30 seconds, who you talked to and who you ended up with.
Certainly. So I reached out to all the people who served on the Chamberlain Committee who live in the immediate neighborhood. Michael had some recommendations, so I reached out to those folks, except ones that no longer live in South Burlington. And I reached out to the school district. The school district put me in touch with the principal for the Chamberlain School. Chamberlain School sent out a note to the, in, in their Friday packet with students last week inviting anybody. And I posted to the Chamberlain Front Porch Forum. Out of those various different resort avenues, Kim Robison and Carmen Sargent, who both live in the neighborhood and both served on the Chamberlain Committee, offered their services. And a third gentleman who was, I think, I'm not sure if it was through the Front Porch Forum or the neighborhood, offered his services and his name is Isaac Basell. I haven't met him personally, but he saw one of the postings and said he lived in the neighborhood. A quick Google search does confirm that he lives in the neighborhood. Works in homeowner education with Champlain Housing Trust. And yeah, so those are three folks who have offered their services to you.
And Paul vetted those by me and I was fine with them to recommend to the rest of the commission. So, you know, at this point, I guess unless anybody has any heartburn, I would say that we proceed with those three. So is everybody good with that? Maybe a quick thumbs up? Looks like we got all thumbs up. So we're good to go with that, Paul.
Great. So we'll get it going to start this group up and thank you to Monica and Paul for having volunteered also.
Okay. And then moving on to minutes, the 11th, the 20th and the 25th of May.
I move to approve the minutes as written for May the 11th, May the 20th and May the 25th.
And Monica, did I see two fingers go up? I did. All right. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Like all thumbs up unanimous? So that's it. Other business, Paul? Doesn't look like we have anything.
Only that I sent you a note about some Burlington comprehensive development ordinance amendments. Mostly pretty minor stuff. I'm just gave you the heads up because by the time your next meeting comes around, their hearing will be at the exact same time. So if any commissioners do have any concerns, please do let me know. Because this is the opportunity for the city to weigh in, but they are consistency with the newly passed state laws, some minor height amendments, things like that. No, no significant changes of use or anything like that.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else or are we ready to adjourn? Monica?
Just a quick, I think we talked about coming up with, somebody called it the Art Klugo of a timeline to get us to our drop dead IZ date of November. Because it really feels like we should be wrapping this up and getting into those PUDs soon. So if that can be part of a future agenda, that'd be great.
Let's plan to dive into the meat of that and the big outstanding questions for the environmental protection standards at your next meeting.
Perfect. All right. If there's nothing else, then thank you all and I think we're done.
Thanks, everyone.
Good. Have a good evening. Thanks.